Oh, sorry, hang on. Wrong cup. That one had mine in it. Are we on?
Yep.
Good afternoon, we're on, uh, we're gonna start off with, uh, members of present, uh, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we'll start off with any approval or corrections for the council minutes for May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-fourth.
I have none. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion or approved, Ezra. Old business, uh, we spoke about matchit center, um, we'll start with that.
Oh, that was kind of a Jonah thing.
Yeah, the matchit center was, uh, challenged to review and Terry, um, what we can do to help improve. The use of the matchit center, um, any suggestions, any recommendations, any, um...
Well, I, I...
All right. Go ahead.
I think that, like, updating stuff, uh, trying to get a list of things that need updated, um, things that may be improved, and go from there.
Okay. Terry, did you have anything?
No, my question was about the, uh, seeing on here about the ice maker.
Apparently is, along with the central air system, I looked at those, those are all as old as the building, two thousand and three. This ice maker's just as old, it's, the way I understand it, Ken, Kim dealt with it, um, she called the company in. It is working, but not up to par, um, not as well as it should, and it's starting to, it was suggested that we replace it.
I guess my question is how do we do all those things and get in lack of use of it?
And supposedly, I guess, I, there's an issue with the cooler too in there, so...
With the air conditioning?
No, the refrigerated cooler.
How do we, how do we get funds to do this?
What kind of money are you talking to replace it to?
Well, to replace the, um, ice machine, they told me it'd be approximately fifty-one hundred dollars. I haven't had somebody come and look at the refrigerated unit at the moment because it is cooling, um, and it was quite costly to have the company come down just to look at the ice machine, so, I haven't had anybody come look at that yet, so...
In the budget that we have for that, is there a minor for fixing it?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not near as I, I don't bring mine, so...
You know much is there?
I can tell you, you guys all got that in front of you. Um, maintenance is, well, for the building and equipment is ten thousand dollars for, for this year. And we'll probably have already spent close to a thousand dollars just to have people come and look at it.
And maintenance, that'll take in the janitorial and...
No, that's all, that's all separated, if you've ever looked down through that, that's all, it's all separated. Under the appropriation.
So, we're halfway through the year, we have roughly nine thousand left in there.
Currently, unless something breaks. Well, and, and if you would decide to buy a new ice maker, I'm not saying it would need to be that size, capacity, but, you know, that's going to take out of that line item also.
I would assume the refrigerator, the cooling system is probably more used than the ice maker. How...
I'm not positive.
Wasn't that cooler replaced several years ago?
Yes, yes, it was. Coca-Cola let us rent one for many years and then we replaced it, but it's not just been a couple of years, it's been probably six or seven.
I wonder if it could be something with, uh, just a cooling system, like a freon system?
It could be in a freon system, maybe a dirty condenser oil, there's a lot of things that could be, the cold part of that, so, it could be a thermostat, that matter.
Then maybe it warrants somebody to come look at that as well.
Well, and like I said, I, the companies that I found to work on these come out of Ozian, so it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour for even them to come and drive down, so an hour and a half driving down, so I mean, you're looking at that, you're almost spending five hundred dollars just for a trip call, um...
But in the long run, they say, let's replace it.
Oh, definitely, like I said, it's, it's cooling, it's just, it's not at...
Altimate temperature.
The alt, yeah, the temperature that the rail services at the moment feel that it's supposed to be.
Um, why don't I get the information off the ice machine? I will reach out to a couple of people that I know that are in that industry and get quotes just as a replacement.
That'd be great.
The cooler, do we want somebody to come look at it, or do we want somebody to clean, check it, see if it's swept out? I mean, even your refrigerator at home's got a condenser in there.
And I can have Mr. Chuck pull it away from the wall and clean the back and see...
I think that might be our first step.
Yeah, I do too, just make sure that that's all in order.
Then we'll probably, uh, get it checked out.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, so when I managed it, we regularly cleaned the ice machine out, we had to put solution in it, cleaned it out, is that getting done? I don't know, okay?
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, the gentleman that we had come was very local, I can't think of his name offhand, but...
He no longer does it anymore.
He was just out at Larry Lumler's this week.
Oh, really? Now, when I called him about the warming oven here a year ago, when they had all kinds of problems, he does, didn't want to work on commercial things.
He does more refrigerating than anything, I don't...
Oh, more refrigeration?
But he was just at Larry Lumler's this week.
Well, I could check with Larry to see if once we clean it and not, and, you know, that...
Yeah, at, at that age, um...
It's not that old.
That was not, but Larry was still on the board when we bought that.
The ice machine?
No, the ice machine is, um, the cooler.
I'm talking about the ice machine, that's what I was thinking.
No, that, that's twenty-one years old.
Well, maybe, uh, you can reach out to Larry, see if this guy is able to come look at that.
If he did, he could do both, he could look at both.
Do what?
What, he won't even look at both of them, I mean...
Well, we already know what's wrong, I know what's wrong with the ice machine.
You're twenty years old, that's, that's life, at the ice maker.
They just don't make them like they used to.
No, unfortunately, whatever you're replacing with isn't gonna last twenty years.
That would be my opinion on it.
If, if the ice ma- maker's at the end of its life, I, I, I mean, if we're using it for, people using it for weddings and stuff like, I, I think we should just buy one.
Well, I'm fine with that, but I think we need to get quotes, and I'll, I'll reach out to a few people I know that's still in the industry. I'll get the information off of it, I'll send it to them, and they can give me a quote over the phone, because it's a matter of changing it out, changing the water line and filter out.
Yeah, that's, I mean, do we even have to have as big a ones as we got?
Well, we thought of, I thought about that, but if we're gonna have to do weddings, it's worked, so do you go smaller and then risk big events? I mean, if we're gonna try to make more events there, and more, bigger events there, I mean, I, there's not a whole lot of difference usually.
Point taken.
Why can't they bring their own ice? Why do you have to provide the ice? It's used for the rail service people too.
It's trying to lure people in with different, I mean, everybody's renting buildings today, so...
We'll look at the numbers and see where we're at, and then we can go further.
And I'm not sure why it's not getting rented out, it used to get rented out all the time, but I know the board changed the rules a few years ago, and they make the people pick up the tables and chairs and, and put them down, and some of the older people that rented it for reunions will not, they said they will not do that. So you've lost a lot of families when you, when they made the rule that they have to pick up the tables and chairs. But it used to be rented out every weekend.
I think it's picked up though, hasn't it, this week?
Well, it's very busy, the end of May and June because of graduation, it's always very busy around the holidays, um, but not near as what it was before.
Just need to keep plugging away with it and come up with ideas.
Moving on to Propel US Thirty, Brett?
Let's be here. So first off, thank you for allowing me a few minutes tonight, um, moving...
Sure, if you need to turn around and maybe step on this one.
Yeah, sure. Alright. As I was saying, I appreciate you all allowing me a few moments on your agenda tonight, um, my name's Brett Lackey, I'm a CDM, I'm a consultant project manager for the NDOT, Propel US Thirty West Study, um, tonight I just wanted to give a brief update on, on where the study is, talk about the alternatives, uh, development process, and just touch on the next steps for the study, I believe you all do have slides here, which is great, I appreciate that. Um, on the next slide, you'll see a map, um, and just as a refresher, the Propel US Thirty West Study, uh, begins at State Road Forty-nine, in Voparazo, and extends east along US Thirty to Beach Road, um, Marshall County, also includes a stretch of US Thirty-one, from US Thirty south to County Road Seven Hundred. Did want to mention that the PEL study process is slightly different than what most folks are used to in past NDOT projects, um, our study teams are out engaging you and, and other study stakeholders early, long before project scopes are known, um, and public feedback is, is vital to the success, success of the study, and will really help inform, um, you know, potential investments, moving forward in the next twenty years, um, so that means the studies are looking at a, a, a planning horizon of, of year twenty forty-five. Um, we don't anticipate that the PEL studies are gonna identify or recommend a single build alternative, um, instead, the studies will result in a reasonable set of alternatives, um, that could move forward as part of NDOT's regular call for projects. Next slide has just a summary, kind of, of some of our outreach activities, to be honest, it's a little outdated at this point, says that we've, this is, this is what we did during our Level Two, um, outreach, which I'll, I'll detail here in the next slides, but, uh, four community office hours, in reality, that's been, uh, several more since then. Um, we had eleven libraries host our Level Two report, uh, we did that basically so that if folks didn't want to read it online, they had a place they could come see a hard copy of the report. Um, and then we had several meetings with stakeholder advisory committees in the Farm Bureau. The next slide has a schedule, which may be the most important or, or more, uh, most interesting for folks. Right now, as I mentioned, we're in the second phase of the alternatives development screening, it's known as Level Two. The draft Level Two screening report came out at the end of March and was available for public comment through April thirtieth, um, but I want to make it abundantly clear, while we're working now to address the comments that we received, we're taking comments on this report and everything that comes out of the PEL through the end of the study, and it's all available online to be commented on, uh, to be reviewed and commented on. So, uh, to touch on the alternative screening process, there's a little diagram on your slide there, um, so given the size and the complexity of the study areas up here, the PEL studies are looking at a three-level screening process, um, and so at each step, there'll be a smaller number of potential solutions, um, but the level of detail also increases at each step. So, like I said, we're in, we're in Level Two right now, um, during Level One, which we also called the Universe of Alternatives, in Level One, we basically created a pot of alternatives or concepts to draw from, um, we ended up with fifty-five different improvement concepts, not location-specific, um, this was just looking at what types of improvements would satisfy the purpose and need for the study, so that was Level One. Right now, we're, we're wrapping up Level Two, so at Level Two, the purpose is to evaluate location-specific improvements. Specifically, in Level Two, we're looking at primary intersections, and those are defined as places where US Thirty or US Thirty-one intersect with a roadway that's classified as a major collector or, or higher. Um, so all in all, we looked at twenty-nine primary intersections, um, in Level Two, of those twenty-nine, fourteen were in Marshall County, um, and two were here in Bourbon. So again, um, what we looked at in Level Two is strictly a function of, is if it was classified as a major collector or higher.
And which two were you discussing in, in this area?
Sure, so Fur, US Thirty and Fur Road, and then US Thirty and Three Thirty-One.
Okay, and, and Three Thirty-One?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay.
So now, looking, right, looking ahead to Level Three, which is what we're, we're getting started on now, Level Three's gonna look at everything else, it's gonna look at the secondary intersections, as well as the roadway segments in between all the intersections, we really just had to do this in kind of a tiered approach so that it could bill on itself. Um, but at the, one major concern we've heard, repeated from a lot of folks, is why didn't you look at this intersection, why didn't you look at this intersection? Which is understandable, um, they're all gonna be looked at at Level Three, so, um, Level Two, again, we just had to start with those major collectors or higher. So in Level Two, um, was really a four-step screening process, which I'll just briefly touch on, the first step was a decision tree assessment tool, it's basically a set of standardized questions, um, and we use this to identify the scale of improvements that were needed at each primary intersection, this is based on, um, this is based on safety data, um, operational data, as well as public input. Uh, Step Two is a planning level traffic operations analysis, which is, much like it sounds, it's, it's a, a traffic operations analysis and model. Uh, Step Three was a qualitative evaluation matrix, uh, this considers multiple factors, but really, it's a table and a chart that allows us to assess at each intersection if this alternative meets the purpose and need, um, what are the anticipated environmental impacts, and, and really what's the relative cost of those improvements. Finally, uh, the last step of Level Two was a conceptual footprint, um, comparison, and this is, this is to give us a, kind of a high-level estimation of, of the area of disturbance for each of these alternatives. So, Level Two's where we first started putting, you know, maps to the report, um, and in Level Three, those maps will have more detail. So, um, throughout the four PEL study areas, there are many different improvements that were considered, and they all, they vary slightly depending on the study area, but, uh, here in Bourbon, the alternatives that were discussed in Level Two were the add length, add or lengthened turn lanes, and crossroad, overpass, and underpass. I believe that both of those were looked at for, at Fur Road, which I'll touch on here in a moment. Uh, the next, next slide is a map, this says all of the twenty-nine locations that we looked at at Level Two, um, so the, including, you know, number twenty-three and number twenty-four on the list, which is US Thirty and Fur Road, and US Thirty and Three Thirty-One. Similar on the next slide is a summary sheet, um, this just identifies all the alternatives advancing at each location. Number sixteen through twenty-nine on the top row are the Marshall County primary intersections, um, and so, this just provides kind of a quick, at a glance, uh, way to see each intersection in which alternatives coming out of Level Two are advancing. Um, so as it says there, at US Thirty and Fur Road, um, the concepts advancing are add and lengthened turn lanes, and overpass and underpass. And then at Three Thirty-One, actually, the screening process indicated that the existing interchange is in pretty good shape, um, the, it's up to current design standards, the, uh, acceleration, deceleration lanes are all at suitable lengths, um, and so, Level Two did not make a recommendation for this. The concern here is that any sort of a, uh, an add grade or a new grade-separated alternative would actually, um, would actually reduce operations and negatively impact safety. So, so, no recommendations were made for the existing interchange of Three Thirty-One. And like I said, in Level Three, we'll be looking at every intersection through the whole corridor. So, right now, again, we're busy processing the comments that we've received, and we received a lot for Level Two, um, then we're revising our report accordingly, um, but again, the draft Level Two report's available online, uh, to be reviewed and commented on, um, at www.profilus30.com. Encourage everyone to, to review the materials there and stay involved as we transition from Level Two to Level Three. Um, we do anticipate that we'll have our draft Level Three report available this summer, late this summer, most likely in August. At that time, it will be made available online, and we'll be out here having public information meetings, I think we'll have at least two for the Thirty West area. I'm not exactly sure where it'll be, but we'll have, uh, two most likely in August. So, that's it, um, just wanted to, again, appreciate your time tonight, just wanted to provide a quick update on, on where we're at, um, we will be back out in a couple of months with Level Three, um, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll come back at that time, so, thank you very much.
Is there any public questions, Stan? Is there any public questions with, with this? You got off easy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for your time. Uh, moving on to reports from department heads, Kim Berger.
I put a claim sixty-four ninety-three to sixty-five seventy-four, five hundred twenty-one thousand, four fifty-nine and twenty-seven cents.
I make a motion to approve the claims sixty-four ninety-three through sixty-five seventy-four.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries to pass.
I need approval of pay at thirteen for the construction of the water plant from Crosby Construction, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll make a motion, pass at pay, or at, pay at thirteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alex, I would like you, um, to pass on to the fire department, but the utility department would really like to let them know how much they appreciated last week them coming down, flushing the lines at the new water plant, um, to help us try to get our testing up in compliance, so if you would pass that on to them. I greatly appreciate it. I want to thank Macy for all the hard work she did for Music in the Park on Friday night, we had a fabulous crowd, and she also has a couple other events coming up, on the nineteenth of July, Justin Soblin's band, who is a local gentleman from town, will be performing at the park, and on July twenty-seventh, an event for the kids in the community, it's Touch a Truck, that will be held at the Triton High School parking lot, and we have gotten a great response from that, from all the area businesses and, and, um, and Plymouth Warsaw, so, she's done a great job. So those are just some wonderful things that's gonna be coming up in the future at the park and at the school. Also, I, we've had a lot of complaints on the feral cats in town, um, Bill's listened to it, and I've listened to it, I really don't know any answer. I know you did some research supposedly on that, that maybe you could share, but the Humane Society, I think is overloaded anyways, and so...
Yeah, they are. The one thing I did find out is, you know, because we were trying to, I've gotten a couple of phone calls myself, trying to find out liabilities and responsibilities, um, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is what I was told, not by anybody, that probably, well, it was told by somebody that probably does know the rules and regulations, if there's any animal or any cat that comes on your property, no matter whether they're owned by somebody else or not, they can be taken in a man's shelter, shelter, or done whatever, because they've, they've not, how did they work that? They have not controlled their animals. So, obviously, we have the, the police department, uh, street department cage, which you have to go through the PD or the street department to put anything into that's not public accessible, um, but I have had some complaints of... The biggest struggle everybody's having right now is the cats, and the cats is the reason why, because you know they're all gonna, and, and one gentleman called me that, he was concerned that his neighbor was throwing a fit, um, about the cat, and he's like, well, I can't control it, and I said, legally, you have to keep it on your own property, so, um... So that being said, I don't know really a, a good answer to any of that, unless, and I don't even wanna, I'm not even gonna say it, because I don't want to go down that route.
I opened my garage the morning, I had one in there, scared the bejeebies out of me.
It's the other communities too.
And a lot of them are supported by the humane shelter, um, which is council of the fee, which we don't do, um, to come mediate. Catch them, take them to the shelter, but the shelters full.
The shelters are full, but I did some research too from other areas, communities, different counties around here, um, they did, their ordinance does state in it though, and Bill and I also talked about this, that if you feed a stray cat, then it is technically yours, so, how you prove that? I don't know, um, that would, that would be hard, but, um, I don't know if that's something that maybe we should think about changing in our ordinance.
The thing is, is how are you gonna prove who's cat?
And, and I know, and, and, and I understand these people's frustrations, I mean, we've had, I don't know how many calls with four or five kittens here or there, you know?
This has been a problem for mega years.
Yeah, so, I, I just don't know, but I did let them know that I would bring it up, they were not able to be here tonight, so, just, just venting their frustrations.
Thank you for that.
I mean, I just don't, didn't know if you guys had any great ideas, because I, I don't know, I just, I just don't know what to tell them.
Apparently you own a cat.
It ran, trust me.
It was in your garage.
It squealed and ran.
Chief Martin, your, uh, activity report?
Looks like we're being pretty productive. And the new guy's working out good?
And anything on your activity report you want to discuss, or anything? Then your permission to hire?
Uh, like permission to hire Carl Anderson, just a part-time status, and then, uh, revisit the sergeant's position in January.
Motion on the floor for that?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that.
All in favor? Aye. Welcome back.
You start tomorrow. Oh, you do? Okay, well, thank you.
Roger?
Uh, yeah, the activity reports. And the second one is, uh, hire Brandon Miller for part-time status for the street department employees.
Uh, motion on the table for that?
I'll make a motion to hire Brandon Miller for part-time status.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have a question, the last meeting we discussed, summer through the winter, end of, is, is the long-term plan for NDOT stage without filing?
If needed. At this point in time, it's more likely to be reported in the rest of the...
Uh, Suzie, Shetland?
Um, last night the commission met, um, the committee in regards to the property, they are currently at two parcels, and they would like, they requested three parcels, so that they could potentially go three times. After much deliberation, there is a water issue on the South Park's property where it floods quite often, so, the planning commission chose to table it for now until they can find out more information in regards to the water, and if it can be remedied and how to fix it, um, and a few other things, so I will be working with Steve and Roger and everybody, and find out some question answers there. BCA did not meet, and then, um, back in, on April eighth, we had a meeting for John Bontrager's property, um, to change it from light industrial to, to family home, the group home, residence, fee, sorry. That is here, if you guys, um, could sign it, the, I mean...
If we approve it?
If you approve it. The, the last night, the committee was all together, and they signed it for the reservation, that they all are in agreement that it should be changed anyway, because currently our ordinance says that we cannot have any residential, residential property on light industrial anyway, so it is a good choice, but it's still up to you guys. And I know that part of his building, the minimum for his duplex is being held up for this.
For the second one he wants to put in, am I right?
The one that he's redoing?
Well, the one he's currently redoing.
Oh.
The one on Harris Street, four oh one South here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And then the other resolution that's in front of you is the planning commission's been working, um, very diligently for quite some time on the ordinance book, and cleaning up and making things up-to-date, cleaner, more appropriate ordinances for our small community to help it to grow, so that is the twelve pages. Um, last month, I did give you a copy of, I'll get time to read it over. But last night the planning commission committee already signed it, so that is the other one that's in front of you.
Any discussions on those? Well, which, which one do we want to talk about first?
Start with the rezoning first.
Rezoning of. John Bonträger.
So, a little to add to that, this was a, a property that was in disney. Um, it's been sitting in vacant for years, um, it is in a damp area. I don't have an issue with rezoning it, I just, I know, the only thing that I ask publicly is he respects his neighbors during the process. Because I know there was a process of the started, I had actually gotten several phone calls and visited the site. And then, um, prior to the permit being issued.
I'm just gonna read this ordinance, two thousand twenty-four oh five, ordinance by the town council Bourbon, Indiana approving the rezoning of one parcel from zone L one light industrial to zone B, two-family group home district. The parcel which is owned by Carl Lime, Lime, Lehman, previously recommended by approval by the Bourbon Planning Commission. Whereas Mr. Lehman currently is the owner and selling to John Bonträger on laying contract of the following parcel. He has the parcel number. Whereas Mr. Bonträger submitted a request to the Bourbon Planning Commission request that the parcel be rezoned from their current zoning of L one light industrial to zone B, two-family group home district zoning. Whereas a public hearing was held and requested and considered by Bourbon Planning Commission on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the Bourbon Commission, Planning Commission recommended to approval of said request in resolution of PC oh one, two zero two four, and the town council approved said recommendation by a vote at its meeting held on June eleventh. Now therefore resolved by the Bourbon Town Council is following, the request to rezone the parcel granted. The following parcel to be rezoned from L one light industrial zoning to L B, two-family group home district zoning, has those, uh, parcel number. All necessary paperwork shall be duly executed by both, uh, parties. Mr. Bonträger will allow the town to carry out this ordinance dated the eleventh day of June, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion?
The biggest thing is with this, guys, is this light industrial, you cannot put a, according to Arizona ordinance, you cannot put a house back in there until it gets rezoned.
So, after recommendations, is there a motion to accept this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Are you gonna pass it on all three readings?
Yeah, that's.
Then you gotta go through that whole?
Yeah. Um, do you wanna do this all in three readings or, or pass it once?
I'm okay with passing it once, just because it needs to be, something needs to be done with it, right now the place is set in sticks.
So, is there a motion on the floor, uh, to suspend the rules, um, for passing ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh five all at once?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and make, and pass this ordinance twenty-four oh oh one on single reading.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to, uh, suspend the rules for ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh five. Now, is there a motion to carry this ordinance through?
I'll make a motion to pass. Ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-four to finish oh five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, now, moving on to the second one, resolution two thousand twenty-four oh two, which would be the comprehensive plan.
That's the planning commission rec- resolution.
Next, next issue, I guess. Resolution two thousand twenty-four oh one. That issue.
It's the number two.
Yeah, number two. You wanna read it?
Are you gonna read it all?
I, I can, why?
Yeah, it's eight pages long. Yeah.
Do you wanna just kinda oversight it? Just a quick review, I guess.
When, um, the ordinance book was created, there was a lot of cut and pasting. So, a lot of things that might apply to Plymouth don't necessarily apply to us. Some things like, that are off the top of my head, because this was like a two-year, two-and-a-half-year process, um, are things like currently our lot coverage is thirty and thirty-five percent, depending on if you're a corner lot. Um, the planning commission thought that forty and forty-five would be good, that's something in here. Taking out a lot of things as far as like in residence, you really don't want like an airport. Um, so those things were taken out as far as special uses. Um, oh, there was a creation of the downtown district, which is from Quad Street to Sunset Street. And then Thompson over to Washington, I think, maybe Harris. That's what it is, is just trying to make it, because this was from two thousand fifteen when it was created. Um, according to the ordinance book itself, every three years, uh, the plan director and the planning commission are supposed to do it in-depth. Look through and make any changes that might be necessary, so that's, you know, that's, that's a lot of it, so. Any questions? I can probably answer questions better than remember what was going on for two years. These are just all of the changes that the, the planning commission, and we went over this after Alex sent it. We read through everything to make sure it's still the way it matched the books with the changes.
Did you have any concerns with it, Alex?
No, I mean, this is pretty much standard for the planning commission to do, to update every three years. Yeah, I don't think you guys also have to make a decision at night, you know, I got a draft of ordinance.
As I say, we don't have an ordinance for this.
So you guys left playing time for the beauty ordinance before you made your statement, we'll hear it next month.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion to have you proceed with, with the ordinance.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Suzie? Is Alex the fire department?
Yep, Alex is here.
Since the last meeting, we've had four calls.
How many?
Four.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ta- Alex?
So, three things, um, first thing is, uh, Karen Holm, the hearing that Kim and I are going to is on Monday. So, I'm still waiting to hear back from your attorney and see if we'll, you know, resolve this short, if it's, not looking like that's gonna be the case unfortunately, so. Sounds like I'll need you on Monday, Kim. The other two things are, um.
What time is on Monday?
Um. Um, and then the other two things were, uh, I had sent a letter to Ms. McVicker, I advised you guys of that, so I'm for the property. She technically has till the end of this month, um, I guess get the windows, I'm taking care of it, I guess by June twenty-eighth, because I actually have a cutoff. She advised my office that she'd have it done on June twenty-second. So I guess let me know if something down there has not changed by June twenty-second, if I need to do something more. Um, and then the last thing was in our, in the last meeting, you guys had asked me to take a look at some golf cart ordinances. I looked at Bremen and also at Holbrook, and I tapped it together, a proposed, um, version of that and sent it to, to all of you. It sounded like you kind of indicated that wasn't necessarily what you were looking for, um, so I haven't heard anything else as far as what you want me to do with that, if you want me to revise it. Throw it up completely, so I guess I just need to know some direction from you guys.
I request I'll wait till next month and review it.
Yeah.
Give Alex some feedback.
I think one of the concerns that Bill had was how do you implicate the safety of small kids on there? Because I don't think it really had that in there, did it?
Yeah, it was in here somewhere.
It's in the new one, but my question is, is why is that in the, and again, being the newest one on the board, how's that any different than any other vehicle on the road? I mean, how does that, does that change any of that aspect of it?
Well, if they're proceeding under, I think it's, they're going under twenty-five miles per hour. And Bill may know for an idea, if they're going under twenty miles per hour, then yes. It, it does fall in a different category, which is why the ordinance kind of helps with that, because it says, and it doesn't matter how fast you're going. The driver has to be sixteen, and everyone has to be strapped in, so then the new version kind of says, so it doesn't, it kind of takes that out of play, so to speak.
Speaking of that, um, and something I was gonna ask, because I don't know, but, you know, in the golf carts, I've been seeing a lot of people driving, I don't even know what they're called, I guess I'm an old guy. But, these little, little wheel things that they're sitting on.
Have you stayed?
Huh?
The one-wheeled, motorcycle?
I see they're, and they're fast little things, I mean, does, what covers that, under our ordinances or?
We didn't have a slow-moving vehicle sign, because these are the.
They move.
Yeah.
It, it does, I mean, I'm, I'm talking, I bet they're going at fifty miles an hour, they're cranking. Um, is that something that needs to be placed in?
I don't think there's anywhere that says they have to be registered.
Is that something that maybe needs to be implemented in some of this stuff?
It certainly could be, if you want me to make it more of a general ordinance that covers golf carts and anything else.
Yeah. I, I'm just throwing that out there, because I see that they're flying all over the roads now, I see there's a couple in town that, I mean, they're not even stopping the stop signs.
But isn't that a violation?
I, I, I'm not sure what.
I thought I even, I could get it, I thought I could even get it ticketed on my bicycle.
Well, you could, but, um, I mean, I don't know what, is it considered a vehicle? So.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's considered a vehicle.
Yeah.
I know what you're talking about, it's motorized.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it makes it considered a vehicle.
They're electric, I think.
I think they're electric, yeah.
Boy, they move.
They do.
There's one in play with you, can hear him coming, it's. And I mean, he's just, he doesn't even stop stop signs.
I, I, I guess I would like to maybe include some of this stuff, because a lot of this new technology's coming out, um. Needs to be maybe pinned into this.
So you guys are gonna give me a written list of thoughts, I guess?
I think you need an updated timeline or a plan.
Yeah.
You need to table this.
Yes.
I make a motion to table this ordinance until the next meeting.
My second.
To give us a chance to look it over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Patron comments. You wanna step up, uh, I guess, so we can hear if he could walk up? Yeah, but I don't know if the microphone will pick up. And state your name for the people that don't know you.
I'm Frances Burkey, and I'm coordinator of the Bourbon Summer Fest Parade, and I'm here to ask the council to give the money for the awards. A hundred and seventy dollars this year, normally I ask for two hundred and twenty. But for the last two years, the band has not been able to participate, that's the same weekend as state. So, I'm, I always brought the fifty dollars back to Kim, so this year I just deducted it. So, a hundred and seventy dollars please for the awards, and, and I would give Kim a list of what they are. It's twenty dollars to everyone except for the Crane Marshall's Choice, and that's fifty, so the total's a hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you for what you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know a lot of people like the parade and.
And they look forward to it.
Yeah, so I.
And Kim said, I told her last year I wouldn't be here this year, but.
She did, she's standing publicly, she is giving it up.
Well, you know, someone keeps saying.
Keeps you.
Yeah, I've heard that too.
Me on the street, and I passed out this hour, it's time to get somebody else.
Thank you, Frances.
Motion on floor?
I'll make a motion to support the Summer Fest, pray for the hundred and seventy dollars for the awards.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Um, anybody else, public?
Of course I do.
Come up.
I don't know if I need to come up front, but my name is Rhonda Swihardt, I live in the old, uh, barber shop building, and I got a ticket for parking in front of my home, which I did not know this ordinance changed, because apparently it was just put out on social media. Not a wise idea, I should have received a letter in the mail, or my landlord, who is here today, could testify she didn't get one either. So, here I'm paying money out of my pocket for, and it's well-known, that this is a conflict of interest between two parties and not the rest of the city.
There's an ordinance that's been in place for gobs of years. That every rental property is to provide a two-part, a two-spot parking spot off of Main Street.
Okay.
On its parcel.
What do you do with the parking when you don't have any back or side parking?
Should it never become an apartment?
Yeah.
Violated the ordinance.
Kinda late now, because I've lived there almost four years, so that, that's kinda mute on this circumstance, unless you're gonna end up jerking the license for that one. I have a home that I'd like to park in front of. If I cannot do that, I would like to have a pass or let me be able to have a safe place to park. The only choices I have for public is behind the funeral home, which that's quite a trip, dangerous, I believe.
And that's not.
Or through the alley, and park across from the EMS. That's dangerous situation too, because I walked through there to come here, and you wouldn't believe all the crevices somebody could be hiding. I, in my age, I shouldn't have to worry about that. I just wanna live in my little home and park as close as possible and live my life. You know, you guys have changed this, didn't tell me, charged me twenty dollars that I didn't know I had to.
There was three meetings that this was discussed at, and open for anybody's comment.
Right. But I was not aware of anything, because I don't follow the social media, because most of the people complain.
It's also in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Legally, we, legally, we have to do.
And that's fine, I did not, I was not aware of this, that's plain out what I'm saying. But it would've been nice to have a letter to everybody who it was affecting and/or their landlord.
There was letters sent out, I can't help what the post office did or did not find the delivery, there was letters sent out.
That's kinda funny, the same residents didn't get.
The residents didn't get it, got.
Couple that was returned to us yesterday.
It, it got sent, it got sent to the owners of the parcel.
Knowledge caused me twenty dollars from, of course, this all stemmed from a personal situation, am I wrong?
Somewhat, yeah.
Personal, okay, so you're, it does have some personal situation. So why has it costed me money instead of putting a two-hour parking limit in front of the businesses that it affected?
I think that was just one aspect of it, Rhonda.
Right, well, I'm just saying, why has it have costed me money when I had nothing to do with it? I'm not in front of a business, I'm not disturbing anybody's peace.
What, what did your landlord say about it?
Yeah, so, um, I was never informed of, um, the ordinance, I lived at my residence in Plymouth, I don't live in Bourbon anymore, I used to, but um, I live in Plymouth now, and I've lived there since two thousand and sixteen, and I didn't receive a letter with regards to this at all. That has been a residence, I would say for probably twenty years, I haven't owned it that long, but I'd say fifteen at least.
Yeah, I'll give you that.
Okay, um, and the residents have always parked on the street. I was unaware of this other ordinance where you're supposed to provide off-street parking, I never knew that. Um, but I know that the residents have always parked on the street there, because there is no other parking available. Now, you mentioned that that never should have been. Now, you mentioned that that never should have been an apartment, I, I don't know how that happened.
I don't either, I'll be honest with you, that, that was four fathers down the previous boards.
You know, obviously someone proved it becoming an apartment, but I do know the parking has always been right there on the street. And I think what we're trying to just ask.
Either a parking pass would be nice, considering I, or someplace you can find that would be safe for me. That I don't have to walk across town.
Wha- what about approaching the bank, it's right across the street, see if they'll permit you to do that.
Well, but the city will. Ask or why do, I mean, or should I have to ask?
Well, actually, your landlord should have to check it.
So, and what if they say no? Then where does that put me in?
Tough spot.
Yeah.
Is there not a sign like within feet of that apartment?
Probably, but you think I pay attention to those signs there, I pass them every day, just like you do, do you need a sign every day?
The new signs that have been put up? Oh, I see what you're saying.
They, they were posted back in March, I believe.
I don't pay attention to those signs, those signs have been there, I zoom into my parking spot, like I said, I don't mess around with this town, I just wanna. Live there in peace, park there.
Is there a way to make a concession for residents who live in these?
I heard there was somebody else that has on Main Street that has the same issue. So that I'm not the only one.
So these are, I'm gonna go back to. The issue at hand, is there was apartments, people put apartments in without permits. Without following the guidelines. Without following what the ordinances are. And then we end up with this. Part of the decision with this is the future of the town. So we have a corner cafe that is for sale, stay with me for a minute, please. We have a corner cafe that's for sale right now that we could put how many apartments in? They have no room to park either. So you fill the whole downtown with, with tenants, now you're pushing all your business out. That is. That's the way it is.
Two-hour parking sign make a difference.
Who's gonna maintain the two-hour parking?
You have police officers watching down between one AM and six AM.
Are you gonna go out and move your car every two hours?
If I have to, I guess I'll have to. I don't want to.
So you're gonna get up in the middle of the night and move your car?
Well, what if I get, what, third shift? I mean, who knows what shift I'm gonna be over the years, either way, you're putting me in a predicament where I can't park close to my home. I would like to find some answers. I mean, that's what I'm asking the council, that's what I'm asking the town.
My suggestion is that your landlord approach First Virgin's Bank and see if it, it'd be alright for you to park there overnight.
I'd just like to know if it, they say no, what happens?
Well, I don't think that's a council's problem.
Well, I'm just saying, you, you changed the ordinance.
The ordinance never changed, that's the.
Yeah, it never changed.
That's the misunderstanding part, this other ordinance, this parking per parcel. Has been in play since at least two thousand fifteen. At least two thousand fifteen, I looked at your par- at your property when I first moved to town in two thousand eleven, ten eleven. It wasn't an apartment then. So, it wasn't. So somebody has put an apartment in there in the meantime, without following the guidelines and the restrictions, and that's what's put us in this predicament. So, and the same situation with the one in town. There was an apartment added that was, nobody ever said anything about, they just did it and they did away with. Their parking access at that point.
But that still doesn't change anything, where I am right now is I have a home that I can't park in front of.
I also understand that there is an apartment downtown on Main Tree, on Main Street downtown, that there is now a tenant in on that floor. That is parking somewhere else, they are not parking there.
And they feel safe.
I haven't talked to him, cause they haven't come in and talked to us about it. I, I'm.
I understand what you're saying, I understand the ordinances that were in place prior to this, I completely understand what you're saying. I think we're just asking for a concession basically, given the situation that there's no businesses right there that she's.
But then we have to look at concessions for everybody else.
But they're not here, they're obviously not concerned.
Not today, they'll be here next month. That's the unfortunate part. I mean, it is.
Well, I, I've got. Two letters here from people complaining about it, but they're not here.
But we, we show up and you guys are just turning around, so it's my fault.
Whatever said was your fault.
No, it's unfortunately just a situation.
It's a situation.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we're just wondering if there is a, a way to kind of. Allow her to park in any area that's safe, I can't create parking, there's nothing there, I. I understand the ordinance, but at this point it is apartment, it has been for fifteen years. And I can't create park, I can't create parking that doesn't exist, so. I don't know what to do other than ask for a parking pass so she can pass.
Well, another option to look at would be ask Harmony Press, if, there's all kinds of space back there.
But I have to walk through an alley.
Beside your apartment?
Harmony Press don't have parking beside me.
I didn't say that, you have to walk down that short alley? From here to the door? And that's a concern?
Are you kidding, you, would you want your daughter, your, your mother or anybody walking down that alley at night?
It's lit. I would check with the bank.
Other than that, there's no other options, is that what I'm understanding or?
Well, how do you make a concession for one?
Everybody else is adjusted.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've thought about this and thought about this and thought about this, cause I, I'm keeping an eye on it, I know who's still there from one to six. And I thought, okay, what's the solution, where are we at? What do we need to do, I have not come up with another solution. I mean, if, if we're gonna do that, we might as well just do it with ordinance at this point.
Yeah, and that's.
Because everybody's gonna ask for concessions.
Yeah.
Or we're gonna have to go into the whole permitting and inspections and everything else in people's personal property, and I'm not for that at all. As long as it's a sa- not a safety issue.
I agree.
I truly don't know what the answer is, I mean, it's.
You put me in a bad position this way, I feel. And I don't appreciate it, I really am disappointed in the way you guys handled this. Number one, it should never be on social media, we should have got a letter. So we could have been a little more prepared.
It was in the newspaper, which is the legal way to post it.
But each resident should have been informed, it's just a right thing to do.
Property owners. Suzie, did you send out stuff to the property owners?
Yeah, and sometimes they come back.
I'm just disappointed how all this turned out.
I've lived at my residence since twenty sixteen, I mean, I get, you know, property taxes delivered to my residence.
Did you keep a list of names that you sent out?
Water bills, I get, yeah, I get the water bill delivered to my address now, so.
But the postal service isn't the most reliable.
Yeah, but we can't blame that for everything, but I'm just disappointed how we both didn't receive something. And I feel that you throw in me. In an unsafe situation, but. If you're content and wouldn't sleep at night, then have at it. Really. I don't think you can hear anymore.
I guess we're ready for something else, is there any other patron comments or concerns you wanna bring up? Yeah, yeah.
Lou Dow, eight four three four Gumland Road. I was just going to make a comment on the um. Person that lives uh at the corner of Thompson and. Thirty.
Center Street.
Center, yeah. The ordinance, one of the things was to get the race car off, off the road. Have you seen where it's parked now? It's across the sidewalk and I own that house next door, so.
So you're requesting that we send them a letter?
Well, something needs to be done, I thought it looked a lot better on the road than it does over the sidewalk, it looks. Yeah, really trashy sitting in the yard.
I mean, we need to send a letter to them about that. Is there an ordinance part about blocking sidewalks, I thought there was.
Well, he's kind of running out of spice.
That he is.
Yeah, but. Yeah, I don't think the sidewalk should be black.
I guess we take that under advisement. There's an ordinance for it. Maybe a letter needs to be sent to the resident owner and, and, and showing him what the ordinance states.
Are you looking at me and wanting me to do that?
I think that probably comes under Suzie, doesn't it?
I think it comes under me.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't meaning you. I was talking to you, I was talking but not looking at you.
If you want me to do it, I will do it, so.
No, no, I think Suzie can do that.
Anything else, Miss Doll? Anybody else have any other comments? Yes.
I just wanna say how beautiful the planters are out here, when I walked up and seen how beautiful they are. But I was wondering if there's any way that the weeds could get sprayed. I was downtown Bourbon yesterday and pulled weeds in front of the businesses. And it's evidently, it's not a priority to them, but we have a beautiful downtown area and now the weeds are starting to grow. And nothing get done by them, the, the business owners won't go out and even pull their own weeds. And I just wondered if the town can put, spray them, I mean, I used to spray them years ago, all the time. But there's weeds right out here, there's weeds in front of the fire station. Just spray them, get rid of them, make them look, look, make it look nice.
Is that something Roger that can be done?
Yeah, we can get them done.
We, I have to ask every year to please spray the weeds in town. I shouldn't have to ask every year. And everything else is beautiful. That's all I have.
Thank you, Deanna.
Make a motion to.
Does anybody else first?
I asked, a- anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.